In our certain, our current circumstances and in that language, under evaluation, you'll see that the evaluation team will consider, among other things, multiple COVID-19 cases in a single classroom, grade or building, the number of quarantining or absent staff members and students, including cohort groups such as sports teams and other extracurricular groups, the rate of nurse visits for COVID-19 or influenza-like symptoms. So we recognize, and the community input was helpful on all of these things, but just referring to that middle column issue, that quarantine, adding that into the mix, helps us to understand something different. People who are in quarantine, and we've specified in this revised document that quarantine means formal quarantining, you know, as recommended by public health official, by our BCS preliminary contact tracing team, or by, you know, your doctor. Not just, I'm anxious, I'm going to keep my kids home, but formal quarantining helps to tell us what, you know, and that the word quarantine is used in many places, and that's why we've tried to, you know, be specific about what we're doing. But when we're considering the number of people who are not in the building, that gives us additional information, not just for students, but also for staff. If we have a number of staff who are out either because they're ill or because they're quarantining, that has a big impact on what we can do in the building, and it's a consideration issue for the evaluation process. I'm just looking back at my notes. The evaluation team also tried to clarify how the decision-making would proceed. So basically, and we recognize that, you know, each week, this may not happen exactly on the days that we specify. For example, next week, we have Thanksgiving on a Thursday. The evaluation team probably wouldn't meet on a Thursday next week if it is indicated that they should meet. But generally speaking, if the information on the chart side of the tool indicates that there should be an evaluation to change the learning mode, then the team would meet on Thursday of that week to evaluate the conditions, the trends in the conditions, the list of metrics that we've talked about in that evaluation section. Immediately following that meeting, that, you know, probably Thursday afternoon meeting, the team would alert Superintendent Good and Board President Snowden, make a recommendation. If the recommendation in that Thursday night event is to change the learning mode, that would be announced to the community the next day on a Friday. The following week would become what we're calling a watch week. That week is there to do a couple of things. It's there to give the community, our teachers, our students, everybody, an opportunity to adjust because it is likely that the learning mode may change. It's also there to give the evaluation team another opportunity to look at trends, to look at the data, and to determine whether, in fact, the change should be made. If the change is, you know, and so that evaluation team would get together again that Thursday, the Thursday during watch week, would confirm or say, you know, we don't think so. If the decision is, or the recommendation of the evaluation team is, yes, we should change our learning mode, that would be communicated back up to Dr. Good and to Ms. Snowden, and the board would be called to meet on the next day, the Friday, to deliberate and make a decision as to whether to change the learning mode. So that would be at the end of the watch week. And if the board changed the learning mode in that meeting, the change would be effective as of the Monday morning following that meeting. So Thursday, first evaluation. Friday, announcement through the schools, through the superintendent. That next week would be a watch week. We'd stay in the same learning mode during that week unless, you know, I mean, everything can adjust. But the idea would be that this tool would tell us to stay in that learning mode. That Thursday of the watch week, the evaluation team would meet again, would make a final recommendation, and that recommendation, if it were to change the learning mode, would go to the board, and the board would make a decision on Friday, and that would be implemented the following Monday if it were a change. It's a lot of information. You know, as I said, things change. I think that's, you know, a lot to start with, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I do appreciate you going through each of this, each of these things. And I can assure everybody that there were hours and hours of debate on each of these items. And I'll just finish up the final note of this, which is that with everything with COVID, we don't expect this to be the last word on this. It may change in light of new circumstances. And also, I just want to highlight what Victoria said, which is that this is a guidance tool. It's not set in stone, if then, then this, which I think is more useful. So I also want to highlight the section that says the superintendent and board may change instructional modes outside of this decision tool, including to be consistent with orders of recommendations from Franklin County Public Health, Ohio Department of Health, Columbus Public Health, or any other guidance. So change it, and also the changes in the learning modes, including targeted closure of classroom grades and buildings, because that's something that a lot of people have asked us. Well, if Montrez has, you know, very low zero incidents and the high school's through the roof, why does Montrez have to close? And I think that is a good point. So this does say specifically that we're going to, that we can be more targeted in our approach to using these tools. So, and I think I made clear in that, but if I didn't, I will try and restate it a better way. And that is that in times of need and times that are different than what we anticipate right now, which is almost every time, I feel like, in COVID, the board and the superintendent can make the change independent of the timing of the decision mode tool. So it may not be that we're able to have an entire watch week. That's what COVID is teaching us, is the realities of, you know, we would prefer to be able to observe the data, but if something happens that that isn't the wisest path, we won't be tied to the watch week timing. We will be tied to reviewing all of the aspects of the learning mode decision tool. Like, we will consider all these things. That's why they're written down. But the timing may be different. So all these things and whatever else comes up in the future that is salient to our discussion. So that's where we are from my...
Let me add, I'm sorry, were you... I wanted to add one thing that isn't a change in the document, but it is a, it's additional information that I learned in the last week and a half or so, which is that the CATS information, which is a rolling two-week analysis of incidence rates in Bexley, it used to be that we thought we were only going to have access to that weekly. It appears that we have access to that information daily. But Dr. Norris and other members, Dr. Turner and other members of our evaluation team have reminded us that it's important to look at not just every day, but to look at how this works over a two-week period at any given time. And so just one of the questions that I've seen a few times in the community response to this is, how old is this information that we're getting? And the answer is, we're getting it, when we get information on a Thursday, it's current as of that day. It's got that day's numbers in it. It looks back two weeks. And that, and maybe Dr. Turner can address this better than I can. For sure, she can address it better than I can. But it, you know, days go up, days, you know, things go up and down. But it gives us a very current view of how things are going right now, but based on a two-week trend, so that we can look at that every day. But it is important to recognize that while the information is current, it is looking at a two-week set of information.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll add to that, and Dr. Turner, correct me if I'm incorrect in this, but my understanding is that that data is available daily, but not to everybody daily. So the link below on this is the link for what you and I can see. Any citizen, click this on and see. But superintendents and certain epidemiologists, people with more clearance, can dive into the daily, each day. They can get in and see a different number as of that moment.
That's exactly right. Pardon me, so I try to share that out each day, but you're right that the public-facing website doesn't have that updated every day, but the internal website, the more secure dashboard, does have it every day. In fact, 24 hours a day. I mean, you can see it whenever new data comes from ODH, that dashboard is updated.
Thank you. The one thing I realized we wanted to add is, I have just one recommended change that I would just want to get out. It's more technical than substantive before other board members talk about it, in case they've seen similar thing. So our evaluation team, in the very first sentence, is comprised of a few more individuals. So I would propose that we add that it's comprised of the superintendent, the director of operations, epidemiologists, pediatricians, school nurses, our BEA leadership, and staff, other experts, and members of the Board of Education. So right now, that's Victoria and I. But I think it makes sense to leave it open for, noting it as members of Board of Education for policy reasons. So that's just a more clear look at who looks at this. And that's all I have. So are there other questions from other board members?
Go ahead, Michelle, I can wait.
Well, thank you. Do you want to put this question out, like, right now? Because I feel like both Victoria and Dr. Norris just kind of addressed it. One of the things that came across my way today was, well, why do we only look at it once a week? And I think what I heard Dr. Norris say is, we actually are looking at the data every day, but we look at it on a weekly basis because we really need a two-week period to gauge the ups and downs. Is that accurate, Dr. Norris?
Yeah, so we gather as a group to look at it once a week, but we monitor it every day. And every day that I look at it, it is the two-week rate that looks at that day, looking backwards two weeks. So all COVID data in the state of Ohio is a two-week incidence rate per 100,000. It's what the state puts out, it's what the county puts out. So it's what we're also looking at in Bexley, is that two-week period of time. But you can do that look back on any day of the week. So CATS puts it out once a week, and on that day, it looks back two weeks. But yeah, you're right, that I can, that I look at it every day, and I share it out with that team more often than once a week.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Marley, Ms. Snowden, I actually am just curious. I think my concern with that watch week, and I think you clarified it. I just want to make sure I understood. We won't necessarily always need to convene for a board meeting to make a decision to switch learning modes, or we will? Because my concern is, what if we don't have, for whatever reason, a quorum to be able to meet, like, for whatever reason?
Right, I was concerned, thinking about that too. But thankfully, House Bill 197 has helped us out on that because we can meet electronically now. And so, and we just need a majority of the board to pass a resolution, so that will be three of us. So if it's, well, we also need a majority for a quorum, but regardless, I think we'll be fine because of our ability to meet remotely. Electronically, and we can, we have to, we do have to get by law 24-hour notice before we meet. So that would be built in. But that's our current restriction.
An electronic decision would not be, like, across email, it would be across, like, this platform, correct?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Something where the public can view our...
Because that's open meeting, right, okay.
And let me just add to that by saying that we had also thought about, how can we make sure that those meetings are noticed in time? And so our intention, or the discussion that we had in the subcommittee, was that we would notice meetings, and then if we didn't need them, we would cancel them, which is going to be a little bit of an unfortunate thing. But it's the only way that we can make sure that we give the public notice that's required, have the meeting scheduled, so that people know about it. And then if we don't need it, if the Thursday decision, Thursday watch week decision is a recommendation not to change, it may be that we end up canceling the scheduled board meeting.
Yeah, that's right, thank you, Victoria, for that recollection.
I actually had a quick question, a couple of quick questions. And maybe this is maybe a good question for Dr. Good. I know that part of the evaluation, and as you pointed out, Marley, which is an important point, is that this is, we're not locked into this. This is a tool to make decisions as we go forward as a board. If things change, then, you know, if we have to change, then the watch week and all these other things will come forward, and then we would have the meeting. But under unusual circumstances, the way that I read this, and maybe Dr. Good, with your experience, from the way that I read this, is that if something very specific happens, you have the ability, this isn't tying your hands from your perspective, Dr. Good, because I want to make sure that we're not doing that either.
No, that's correct. You're correct in that assumption. And actually, that's always been permissible by statute. So this actually gives us more data and gives the board more rationale for supporting those decisions.
Right, and I thought that that was the case. But, you know, when we look at, when we have a tool like this, I think it's kind of self-defined that it's a tool for us to make decisions as a district, working together as much as we can and getting as much data as we can. Because I think it's incredible how, I think the task force and how this was put together, the depth of information and data that is being, not only in putting this together, but in the decisions that are being made. So I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge that because I think it's important. I noticed we have a lot of people online attending, that this is a tool that we would be using, that there are a lot of people that are focusing their time and their energy on helping us use this tool, not only using this, but other data and other information to make a decision as elected officials on policy, and not just on specific, here, you have to do this, you have to do this, that we're given that leeway as well. So I really, really appreciate having this tool and the clarifications that were made. And I can't thank everybody enough, especially on the task force, on putting this together. And thank you, Victoria, for summarizing this and letting us know the changes from our last meeting. I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Me, I'm never fast enough with the unmute. Yeah, I'm never fast enough. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this is a Dr. Williams or Dr. Good or a Dr. Norris question, but I'll ask it, and then whoever feels like they want to answer it can answer it. So the last paragraph, kind of on the right, says the decision may be revised in light of new information, and then in response to feedback from teachers, staff, administration, and parents. And so I guess the question I have is, this is something that I've been kind of turning over, is like, if we see certain trends, like, throughout the course of the year, like, say, we know, like, supposing that we see trends, like upward trends, like, following holidays, or in conjunction with some other, like, kind of trigger, that allows us to kind of put those into consideration. So we could conceivably say, well, we know that not everybody, that social distancing is harder at this, people will have harder time using social distancing, following Thanksgiving, or whatever, whatever the other criterion is. And so we have a little bit of flexibility there to kind of consider those, if we see trends like that, is that correct? Does that make any sense, or was it super rambly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to that point, Michelle, the purpose of tonight's meeting is not to discuss whether we will change our learning mode tonight. The purpose of tonight's meeting is, as noticed, was for us to discuss this learning mode decision tool. But for the sake of conversation, as we're all here and starting to think this through in our realities, as you look at this tool, should we adopt it? We would currently be in Level 3 RED with 200 or more in CATS data. And so we would be in the evaluate for remote section on Thursday. So we have in place the ability to go through all of these steps now and to pull all of this data, so that we will be able to address it specifically on Thursday in this evaluation group. Again, there's nothing to say that, you know, if tomorrow morning, Dr. Williams wakes up and every single child in the high school is sick, that we won't, you know, that we won't be, we couldn't make another decision at that time. But the plan is to work through this, where we are in levels, and move across the charts. And I will just say on that front, since I know there is a lot of conversation right now and concern about the levels in our, in our community, and rightly so, because they're going up, as we've seen, that I just implore people to continue to follow guidelines. And I want to give a plug for tomorrow night. You'll see, there's a special Bexley Blast that's sent out today for COVID-19 expert. And it has our own Cindy Tyson, who's our nurse, and then Dr. Norris as well, Allison Norris. And they're going to talk a lot about, I think, quarantining and what's proper. So quarantining and what you should be doing. I think it's a frustration right now in the community, in all communities, not just ours, that with the rise in numbers, I think the health departments are having a harder time keeping up with tracing. But it's essential that people quarantine and isolate if they've had exposures. And there are lots of rules around that that are pretty complicated. I mean, as you guys know, I had COVID, and I had to talk to two or three doctors to figure out exactly what we were supposed to do, both for me and my family. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy answer, but it's critically important that people follow these guidelines to keep us all safe. Because I believe, and what we've seen in our data, is that our buildings, our classrooms are the safest place to be. I saw kids, students, and teachers following our safety guidelines rigorously. It was very impressive. And I do believe, and the numbers bear out, we have yet to have a single case of spread in our classrooms. So there's no evidence of transmission in our classrooms, but it's congregant settings outside that are, you know, causing problems, and a lot of problems. So I just implore people to continue to be vigilant, especially, obviously, with the holiday coming up. Think about that, because, think about your choices, because at some point, they are going to affect, even though our buildings can be as safe as we can make them, and again, all evidence and points to the fact that they are very safe, we won't be able to overcome a conflict breakout, outbreak, if everything around us is being infected or quarantined or whatever. We don't have, you know, the staff, the... At some point, it would have to, we would have to shut down. So we're mindful of that. And I just want to remind everybody that that's within each one of our individual control as to what we do with our, with our own family and our own choices. So that's kind of my soapbox, I guess.
Marley, just to follow up really quickly, when you mentioned the Franklin County Public Health, didn't they, did they issue a statement about what you said about schools, about that schools are, because of the precautions in place, that it's one of the safer places to be? Didn't they issue something a couple of weeks ago, I think?
They did, thank you for reminding me. Yeah, so both Dr. Mashika Roberts and Joe Mazzola from, so that's Columbus Public Health and Franklin County Public Health, issued a statement on November 6th saying that they, I'm trying to find the specific language, because I did have it called up, and I appreciate it.
I've got it here.
Yeah, do you want to, if you got it, would you say it for me? Thank you.
Yeah. Cases are, despite rising case numbers, we believe it is safe for kids to go back to and remain in the classroom as long as all safeguards are followed, including wearing a mask and social distancing. The data shows that children and teachers are safe in the classroom. Our behavior outside of schools puts them and all of us at risk. And that goes on to say that every district has to make its own decision. And I think it, I think Dr. Good can confirm this. I believe that Joe Mazzola and Dr. Roberts confirmed that what they meant by that was not that we should all be all-in, but that in the hybrid model, the students are in a safe, you know, that what we are doing to keep our kids safe in school is working.
That's correct. And whether in hybrid or all-in, provided the safeguards can be implemented, but there are districts that are able to maintain the six-foot distancing, wear the mask, and have all students present, mostly because so many families have elected for the remote education. So the actual number of students in attendance is far less than would be under normal circumstances. And therefore, they have the six-foot distancing observed with all-in.
And I think, Dr., I'm sorry, am I cutting you off? Dr. Good, I think when you gave us those numbers from the schools, that sort of border within our 43209 area and smaller, similar districts that were all-in, that was the key factor, was that they could maintain the distance as well as the masks. Whereas for us, even with the amount of students that we have in the e-learning virtual school, we still would not be able to achieve that six-foot distance requirement if we went all-in, correct?
It is, with one clarification. There was one district that elected to have K-12 all-in, but in the secondary schools, they were not able to maintain a six-foot distancing. They have since moved to a hybrid for the secondary schools.
And is that hybrid, like, A, B, or is it that Monday, Wednesday, Friday combination?
I'd have to get online and check to see which hybrid they're utilizing now.
Don't worry about it. I just...
There's a whole man of hybrids out there.
And I can add that in our recent review of the CATS data, Bexley, you know, this is just somewhat anecdotal because it'll change, you know, it can change tomorrow. But Bexley, right now, of all the districts in Franklin County, Bexley is doing the best today. You know, it might be different tomorrow. But we are doing a really good job. It doesn't always feel that way because we do have increased cases, increased quarantine, increased absences, and, you know, both of students and teachers. But I believe that Bexley, as a community, is working hard. I saw it in our schools today and yesterday, and I see it when I'm out in the community. And I'm encouraged, and I, you know, I appreciate Marley's comments about, let's really be careful as we go through this holiday season to do everything we can, because it will have a huge impact on what we can do for our students going forward and the safety of our teachers.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that, or comments that anybody would like to make?
I have one more quick one, Marley. So this is for... So this is for Jill, I think, more than anyone. It's like, almost like a preview question. So as I understand it from the way that Victoria kind of explained it tonight, people, absences based on quarantine aren't really, or like mandated quarantine, aren't really being factored into this because this is a medical model. We're looking at actual like illness and safety in the schools. But the issue of like educating the students during quarantine, that's something that would be more addressed when we're looking at the learning model and how we might shift and adjust that. Is that? Is that accurate?
We would support those kids.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
We would support them, but, but I will say, Michelle, that we have added into this learning model, I'm sorry, into this decision tool under evaluation on the right side, that if there are, you know, that one of the factors that would come into play for the evalu- evaluation team is quarantine. Quarantining students, quarantining. Teachers. Because it, you know, there, there comes a point where you have to know whether you can actually do school.
Thank you both for that clarification.
Okay. So before we move on to vote, we wanted to make sure and allow for public comment. I know that that we've had emails and all of us have had conversations with people, but we wanted to make sure to give any final ability on, to give public comment. I just want to give a quick side note here. And that is that as, as we've mentioned before, Ms. Abraham has been conducting a learning mode task force. And she has on our website, parent feedback for the current learning mode and just feedback in general. And I will, I would really encourage people to use that tool. If you have any thoughts on, on, on how we might go forward. It's useful to us as board members, and I know it's useful to our staff and administration. We've been reading through those. So we'll continue to try and, as, as a board, as we try and work on all of our communication skills. We'll try to continue to use that mode of, of data gathering because I think it's, it's very useful. So that's just a little side note. But of course, we do welcome public comments. So I will move forward with that and say that although under state law, the board is not required to offer a public comment during our board meetings. And typically, actually, in, in special board meetings, we do not offer a public comment. We thought it was important today and we welcome the opportunity to be here from our community members. So as such, we encourage your participation within certain parameters. If you would please, I believe that we've had on our website, the the statement that tells people how to sign into the meeting and let us know if you want to join our meeting. So and speak today. So we look forward to hearing your comments. We ask that you per our board policy, keep them to five minutes and we generally do not exceed the 30 minutes total of public comments. So if there are any Mr. Trilled, can you give us the indication of whether there are any people who would like to be here to poll comments?
Mr. Trill's not with us tonight, so, and, but I also checked with him just now. There were no emailed public comments, but I do see people raising their hands. So if the attendees would raise their hands, I'll allow them to speak. We, we have a couple already, so I'll acknowledge him. Looks like it's, they're coming in in order. So again, as a reminder, if for the individuals wishing to speak, please list yours, say your name and your address for the record, please. And the first I'm going to allow is the name celebrated.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you all for all the hard work you're doing. I really appreciate it. I know this is not easy. I have more of a question than a comment.
I'm sorry, and can I, I hate to interrupt you, but I will say, I didn't finish, I didn't finish what I should have said, so I appreciate if you let me interrupt and just go back. I will just say that this is, I should have noted that the public comment is just that, it's the public's opportunity to be heard. It's not a question and answer session with the board. So although we look forward to hearing your comments per our board policy, we don't respond to public comment in meeting or as individual board members, but you can be assured that we're actively listening and taking notes for our future reference review and for the vote tonight. And again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for our records, we'd appreciate it.
Of course. And I will state it as, I'll, I'll make it a statement rather than a question. My name is Lindsay Kaufman. My address is 200 North Columbia Avenue. I've been reviewing the learning mode decision tool and also the COVID-19 quick stats for Bexley. And what I read is that our Bexley two week incident rate per 100,000 is 268.8. And the fine print tells me that that is pulled from the COVID-19 analytics and targeted surveillance system for schools, the CATS report. So when I look at level three red for Franklin County and the number 268.8, that tells me that our schools would be fully remote. Is that the way that you read it all? Sorry, that's a question.
I understand. I understand the question though. And let me just, you know, it's, I know it's difficult. And, and I don't want to make it any more complex, but, but what are, what we're approving tonight, if we, or what we're looking to approve tonight would say that we evaluate for remote. It wouldn't say we would automatically go to remote. Do you see that on the screen?
I do, thank you.
Okay, good. Ms. Kaufman, did you have more comments or questions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then, so Mr. Smith, the next.
Yes, the, the next individual that I see raised a hand is Alana Spector.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Alana Spector. My address is 2444 Fair Avenue. And I had a few comments. My first is that I'm genuinely disappointed that this tool is no longer, in my mind, a tool because we've been asking for transparency, but instead of using this as a transparent mode of decision making, you're now taking it in the direction of there will be an evaluation behind closed doors. And then a decision will be made that the public will not be privy to. And I'm very disappointed in that. And I also wanted to point out that you, board has made the point several times that we have managed to keep our students safe. Although I, in my personal email between high school and middle school, have seen an alarming number of emails just in the last 24 hours. But the board has made the point that the students are safe because of the protocols we have in place. Yet as I look on this tool, under county level red, you have us evaluating for all in. And we know that there is no way to maintain a six foot distancing in all in. So I take issue with that. I, I also take issue with hybrid and purple. I mean, the, the county has defined purple as we should be staying home, we should be leaving for supplies. I, I, I guess my final comment is these rules have dramatically changed since you asked us as families to make a decision on August 20th in terms of what mode of education we felt safe. And I'm asking the board to tell me and our community, what options are you presenting to our families? Should we no longer feel that our children are safe in this district with these rules in place? I can tell you from our experience that my daughter in high school has only two of her six classes offered on the PLP. There's been no conversations about how special ed children are going to see in specialized designed education for themselves using this PLP. I, I want to know more. And I think that that should be the first priority of this group. That we should have real options to keep our children home if we don't feel that they're safe in the buildings, given these new parameters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'm just talking alone in my office. Next name is Jay Baker.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Jonathan Baker, 252 North Stanwood Road. And that'll be, I'll be quick. I recall the board meeting back in August and there was discussion about the extracurricular activities and or the continuation of them, in large part because they're outside. And, and, and then of course, there's volleyball. And we're working under the guidance of the Board of Health as well. And so there's discussion. And I just feel as though had there been the rise despite the surge in cases in August that we're experiencing now, we wouldn't have a question about sports, let alone the fact that we're going into a situation where these sports most likely will be indoor sports in particular. So I do find it interesting that we're trying to figure out, there's school, but yet still have sports. And I do have some concern about that. I, I only ask, do people consider that as opposed to the question of can we make this work with limited battle scars or consequences, or in this case, children, you know, who become COVID positive? Can we instead change the narrative to, well, should we be in this battle at all? You know, should we, should we rethink the conversation, reframe the conversation and put safety first and academics first? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, any others?
Yes, a few more. Sorry, just Adrian, Adrian. I will. You should be good.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. My name is Adrian Bayless. I'm at 2413 Bexley Park Road. Thank you for all the great information this evening. I would just like to share a comment as a household with two working parents who are considered essential workers who have struggled with the challenges of providing safe childcare while our children are not in school full time or all in. I ask you to consider that while the watch and wait period sounds extremely helpful to the staff, it completely neglects to think about parents who apparently will have 24 hours notice to secure childcare with every constant shift in and out of different learning modes, which is an increasing struggle in terms of finding safe and competent and, you know, childcare staff who are able to come into our homes or to share babysitters amongst families in Bexley or to pod children in groups for families who have two working parents. And I find it very disappointing to expect all of us to play flinch with 24 hours notice with the shift in these models. And I'm not sure what you advise groups like the Bexley Rec Jeffrey Care Program when they have families that have two working parents who will also then expect that Jeffrey Care Program, I hope to be able to shift and constantly play flinch with them. So how, I ask you to consider how this model will impact our only lifelines for childcare right now and how working families will be able to be accommodated in perhaps a better way as you consider timelines for implementing the model. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that input. I just want to make a clarifying point. Under the current learning mode decision tool, there would be one week in between, not 24 hours. So the intent would be that we would indicate that that we will be considering changing modes and that that watch week would be the opportunity for parents to look for alternate care. And also we are working closely with Bexley Rec and JCC so that they could hopefully parallel those changes with us so that there would be not, there wouldn't be a gap in that. That would be in, that would be our first choice, would be to go through this whole week of watch weeks that we have a full week. Well, actually more than that, a week and a few days, week and a weekend. So just to make that clarifying point. Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, who else do we have?
I believe that is it. We should probably give a second, see if anybody else can raise their hand or would like to raise their hand. We had I think someone may have unraised their hand earlier. So I, I see no more raising, no more hands raised. So I believe we've got everybody.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. So we will move on now to our resolution section, which on tonight's agenda comes under four A. And I would like a motion to improve, to approve action item two A, which includes the resolution found in four A and the matrix decision making tool in two A as its attachment. And you're going to have to unmute. Thank you. So that's Ms. Minio as our, as a motion and Ms. Mitchell as our second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Hey, Marley, I'm sorry. I was, I know we.
One second. Hold on.
Having trouble getting his mute off.
Unmuted.
Well, he's working on mute, Marley. I just, just, I want some clarification because this learning tool or this decision tool feels pretty final and you know, just as a working parent myself, I do, in seeing the rising case rate, I wonder will we be continuing to tweak it as we need to? Or is this like the, the final mode and, you know, this is.
Yeah, no, I would say as with everything COVID, I'm sure that there will be something that changes. I mean, we wanted to have something set. And I think our intent is to work off of this as long as we can, because I think.
Like a benchmark.
Consistency. It's the best of what we have now, but as Maya Angelo says, when we know better, we're going to do better. If there's, if there's a better way of doing it, you know, in the future, we'll, we'll come to that. That's, I think there's this necessary flexibility.
Right.
But for, yes, but for now, you're right. This is final.
Wow. Sorry. Thanks, John. And so if this for right now is our, our mode to be final to go forward. And my vote is aye also. I'm sorry. Guess we should take care of business first. I just want to make sure that our, our community members are able to, and we're continuing to provide them with an avenue and reminders to provide the district with feedback so that if we need to make adjustments, we, we, we need to make those adjustments. Like we can't just take this as a, this is our marching orders and we don't change it. I just want to make sure that there, that that flexibility is not just stated, is understood, is an expectation that we, we are going to do that.
Yes. Dr. Good, would you like to speak to that point at all? Just the statement around flexibility of continued thought and development of what we're doing?
Well, certainly. And I know Dr. Norris could probably weigh in as well, but you know, we seem to learn a little bit, something new about the virus each day and, and the transmission and who transmits it easily and who doesn't. We also learn how districts across the nation are handling this, the, the learning and what sort of models are working and which need to be tweaked. I think everyone knows I'm a, a, a large proponent of very collaborative iterative decision making. And when we get new information that makes sense and helps us to evolve this for a better solution for our community, then I, I feel certainly that this board's demonstrated that it's going to listen to that and accommodate it. I, I feel certainly that this board's demonstrated that it's going to listen to that and accommodate it where appropriate and reflect that in, in, in the newest version. And, you know, we've all learned through this pandemic to be much more nimble. And, you know, that this is, this is the best, as, as President Snowden indicated, it's the best of what we have at this point. But it doesn't mean there won't be another best around the corner. And that's why it's important for the community to continue to do their diligence in reading research and looking at other models and sharing that information with us. That's, that's how we develop community, and that's how we develop unity. And so I'm encouraged that there are so many people on this call and so many people that are willing to share their thoughts and, in very civil fashion. And it's, it's a joy to respond to those and work together to, to continue to take us to next.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any other questions?
No, I just needed to, I guess you could say, voice my public comment.
That's fair. Does anybody, any other board members have any other comments that they want to make?
I'll just say that I think it's been really helpful to get the input from the community because it has formed the discussions that we've had since we put the, the tool out in its first draft form. We've talked about all the points that we got input on that were really helpful to us. And I know it's, you know, things have changed and I appreciate the ongoing input.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I wholeheartedly agree with that.
Marley, I'm going to just add one, one last point in here, since we're already kind of off talking about it. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like the, the, I, the actual idea for like a tool like this kind of came from community feedback. People said, we need a little bit more structured parameters. We, we'll feel more comfortable with when we have like.
We know.
Better definition of parameters. And so I feel like that's, that's kind of, this, this whole thing is like in response to that, that feedback.
And I think it's people, you know, and I have to remind myself of this too, when I'm having my hissy fits about whatever and dealing with and adjusting to being a working parent and, and, you know, COVID learning models, if you will, is that, you know, we're not trying to deliver a perfect solution because there isn't a perfect solution. We are trying to take the feedback that our community is giving us and providing them with more information and more tools. And, and it, it was never designed to be a zero sum game. You know, I, I, I don't think that we have ever, you know, perpetuated that there's no way we're going to have illness in our schools. I think what we, we're, we've tried to communicate is the things that we are doing to try to keep children safe is helping. And, and I just think it's really important, and hello, Duke says hello. I think it's really important that we just all remember as a community, as we're, we're providing these tools that you're asking us for, that this incredibly hardworking task force and administration and staff and really just the community members participating and doing their part, this is an evolving, it, it's just an evolving mass. And, and every day we learn a little bit more and make adjustments. I really, you know, when I look at it, it's not perfect. It doesn't sit perfectly well with me. But I also understand that I, that's not the option right now. Perfect is not the goal, is to get it better each day and get better. So I appreciate the, the effort of that. And Ms. Minio, your points as well, too.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board? I think Mr. Smith might appreciate if I recall that vote. So he can have it clear for the minute. So if everybody will take off their mute. And.
Sorry.
That's all right. Ken, so we have a motion and a second that stands, but can I recall the vote? And all in favor of approving 4A, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, great. Thank you very much. So we are currently moving into executive session. I will tell the public that there will be no vote after executive session. So we will not, we will come back into adjourn the meeting, but we won't have any further discussion at the end of our executive session. We will just come into adjourn. So given that, I will say, thank you for making that bigger for me. I would like to have a motion to hold an executive session in accordance with Ohio Vice Code 121.22 so that we may hold, have a discussion over 2A, which is employment of a public official.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposing sign? Excellent. That motion carries. We will meet an executive session on another platform. And I will say goodnight to our community members, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Okay.
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 To adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All papers signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposing sign? All right, we're out. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I've got your book here. I'm going to finish signing it. I'll bring it in.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.